Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 12th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the city council charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are recorded for record retention and transcription. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If the citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. Agenda item number one is roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and site visit. And so we will have Aisling if you will call the roll, and if each commission member would state what area they are from, as well as anything that they would need to disclose.
Jared Burnt?
Here. Why don't you explain to it, yeah? Okay. My name is Jared Burnt. I live in the Highland area. I made site visits to agenda item number three and agenda item number four. I have nothing else to report.
Sean Hargraves?
My name is Sean Hargraves. I reside in the university neighborhood. I conducted site visits for agenda items number three and four, and I have nothing else to report.
Julia Sanders?
My name is Julia Sanders. I live in the South Park area. I completed a site visit to agenda items three and four, and have nothing further to report.
Ryan Satterfield?
Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area, and I have nothing else to report.
Sarah O'Connor excused this evening, and Jeff Moore unexcused.
Very good. Thank you, Aisling. All right, agenda item number two is approval of minutes. Commissioners, I assume you've been able to review the minutes, and if there's any discussion on that, we would have that now. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I motion to approve the minutes. Second that motion.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Aisling, would you call the vote?
Burnt?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Motion's passed. Agenda item number three, preliminary plat Barton Road subdivision. Brad Fraser, represented by RMEs, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 1.12 acres, more or less, into three residential lots located on Barton Road west of I-15. The property is located in a residential, commercial, professional zoning district. So if we could hear from the applicant?
Good evening, commission members. My name's Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering Survey at 600 East Oak here in Pocatello, representing agenda item three. We're proposing a subdivision. Basically, it's a multi-family project, and it's off of Barton Road. You can see this is South Fifth Avenue here. Barton Road is kind of the east-west connector there. This is a manufactured home park located immediately south. We have the animal shelter to the west, I guess, and then the kind of smaller segment of the mobile home park located immediately south of our project. So what we're proposing is essentially three building units. Each one of those, so this is a fourplex, this is a sixplex, and this is a sixplex. So we've been, it's in total is about one acre or so, and we've been working on this project for a number of months. We've met with staff multiple times on this project, and we originally started with four plexes and then went to kind of six plexes due to the terrain and to try to kind of minimize stuff. So we, from our original proposal, we've reduced down by two units, and we've worked pretty diligently on the hillside ordinance, and we do recognize that this is a hillside development area, at least a portion of the site is, and have got the project to fit in there reasonably well with, you know, moderate impact to the slopes. And I still think we're within the confines of the allowable disturbance and things related to the hillside ordinance. The intent was to have four lots, and I think our, somehow our fourth lot got omitted on the plat, but I think the staff kind of picked that up. Essentially, everything will be kind of common outside of the units. It's not really intended to be individually owned or anything like that. It's just essentially common area outside each building. So I think we've complied with all of the requirements per city code. This fits within the RCP zone as an allowable use, and I've reviewed the staff report comments, and I don't think that we have anything to add. If there's questions, I certainly would be happy to add, answer them. Otherwise, we just ask that you approve it as presented.
Very good. Thank you, Mitch. Any questions for Mitch?
So on, out of three buildings, the one on the right, right to the right of that, there's like a purple square. Is that a drainage pond?
It is, yeah. So typically, before we bring it to you guys, we like to do a fair amount of design and understand exactly, as much as we can, how the project's going to function, although it is at a preliminary stage. And so that, you know, is an appropriately sized drainage pond for this project.
Well, yeah. So there is a trail that connects Barton Road to the Stevens Performing Arts Center. Is that going to be reshifted around in a different area? Or is it going to just keep on going the same direction, or is it going to be no longer there anymore?
Um...
I know it's not really your guys' problem, but I was just looking at, I mean, that's a lot of people use that area, they're going over private property to go up to Highlands, oh, not Highland, but ISU.
I think we'd certainly be willing to look at reconfiguring the trail as part of this project. However, I did make some contact with ISU early on in the project, and we were actually looking to try to kind of reconfigure this whole area, and I don't believe they were really all that interested in working with us, per se. But I think if we can get some permission from them, I don't think we'd have a problem kind of creating an alignment or route for that trail. But yeah, right now, it does bisect through our property.
Anything else?
What is the proposed height of these buildings? Are we talking two-story, three-story?
Two-story, yeah.
Two-story.
Anything else? Thank you, Mitch. Carl, if we could get the staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Carl Anderson. I am a senior planner here with the City of Pocatello. You have before you for consideration is preliminary plat for the Barton Road subdivision, submitted by Brad Fraser, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering Survey. The subject property is located north of Barton Road, south of Otto State University, Red Hill, as depicted here. The proposed subdivision encompasses 1.12 acres, more or less, in its own residential, commercial, professional. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into three lots, each to accommodate a multifamily dwelling structure. Our RCP zoning district provides a minimum lot size of 1.45, or 452 square feet per unit in a multifamily development. The applicant's proposing 14 units at this point, and with parking proposed, and based on the slope standards, they could fit up to 16 comfortably, and maybe even 17 from there. The topographical slope of this site is greater than 15%. Per condition number two listed in the staff report, all standards of Pocatello municipal code 1705140 shall be met at the time of final plat application submitted. Staff has reviewed the application and finds that the proposed Barton Road subdivision is compliant with all applicable standards of city code 162050, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to stand for any questions that the commission may have. Merrill Plowell, Public Works Department is also here for any questions from Exhibit One attached to the staff report.
Very good. Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl?
I don't know who would be better fielding this, but we don't need another ingress egress for this build?
Thirty units is typically the cutoff.
Okay.
Once it's there, then there would be an additional.
Okay.
Or there.
All right. Thank you, Carl. Thank you. Right, commissioners, it's before you. Any discussion on the application?
No, sir.
I feel like it's a decent enough project. It seems like they are complying with everything that needs to be done there for that plat.
I motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application with the conditions that have already been stated in our paperwork.
There you go. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Aisling, would you call the vote?
Sanders?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number four. This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This time, it's been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Jeff Andrews of Fearborn Engineers, represented by Richard Creason of Myers Anderson Architects, for a conditional use permit for office buildings on Fredericale Road west of South Fourth Avenue. The property is located within a residential high-density zoning district, and this use is allowed through the conditional use permit process. And so this is a public hearing. We will now open the public hearing and would ask for the applicant to come forward and make their presentation.
We didn't, you know, present a presentation yet, everybody just kind of reviewed the drawings. I have Richard Creason of Myers Anderson Architects. Chairman, commissioners, thanks for having us here. And then this is Brandon Lewis with Myers Anderson Architects. Essentially, project's fairly straightforward. We have, Mr. Jeff Andrews has three parcels there over off of Frederigale Lane. They want to use those three parcels to house a new office facility that's roughly 7,500 square feet, a two-story facility, designed to fit within the kind of residential parameters and look fit nicely within the area. The property right now is currently has essentially two residential units on it. Those residential units would stay. The back part of the property, my understanding, used to be a creamery or a dairy back there, and much of the site's been underdeveloped and slightly left under, hasn't been well taken care of, but so this will be a huge improvement to that property, to have a nice new facility on it. Currently, we're showing 95 parking stalls within the space. The 7,500 square foot building wouldn't necessarily need all those parking stalls, so there's some flexibility on designing that parking space to only has enough parking to handle the office. We just wanted to show on this initial that we have room for the parking for the two structures within the space. Looking at all the requirements through the conditional use permit, we've provided the landscaping buffers around the property so that there's a nice barrier between the residential areas, and it'll act as a nice landscaped area, looking out for the residences that are there, and it wouldn't impede on too much. So looking at the project, we feel like it meets the requirements, and we're requesting that you approve the conditional use permit.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So there's one building that's getting torn down, that's the creamery building, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Is there any other buildings back there that are?
I may have to ask Richard here some clarification on it. The current, our thought is that some of those facilities would stay as is.
Initially.
Initially.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carl, if we could have the staff report?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Carl Anderson again, City of Pocatello for the record. As stated by the applicant, the application you have before you is a conditional use permit for the use of a office building located within the residential high-density zoning district, submitted by Mr. Jeffrey Andrews of Fearborn Associates Engineering. The subject properties include three tax parcels totaling 2.47 or more or less acres, and are located at 421 and 443 Frederigale. The site is currently residential in nature, and where development is proposed includes two 7,500 square foot office buildings in phases, with one in the immediate phase, and then a second building in sometime in the future. The existing residential structures on-site, three single-family homes, are proposed to remain at this time and not to be sold separately. If the property were developed as a multifamily development, as permitted outright in the RH zoning district, the land may be developed to accommodate a maximum of 74 residential units, which would require 148 parking spaces, based on minimum lot size standards and parking requirements. Additionally, a multifamily development, as described, would likely generate more traffic to the site and would not require a transitional buffer, landscaping buffer. The applicant, as detailed in the staff report, the applicant shall coordinate with the necessary city of Pocatello departments, shall coordinate with the necessary city of Pocatello departments, such as fire, public works, engineering, sanitation, water, and building departments prior to the submission of the building permit, to address improvements that may be required. Improvements may include, but are not limited to, the installation of manholes and verifying or reinstalling the private sewer main section, and/or installing all water surfaces and stormwater heads. All noticing requirements for conditional use permit have been met. At this time, four public comments have been received and are before the commission. One in favor, two are neutral, and one is against the application. Additionally, a member of city staff resides in the immediate vicinity of the area, and this staff member has not been a party to the review or processing of the CUP application. Based upon review and analysis of the application materials, subject site, and surrounding area, and applicable municipal code sections, the staff finds that the proposed development meets the criteria of review for the CUP application, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission may wish to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the conditional use permit application, and authorize the chair to sign the findings. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Excellent. Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl? All right, thank you. So we'll now move into the public hearing testimony gathering. We will start by asking for testimony from any who are in favor of the application. Those that are here that would like to speak, if they would please state their name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commission members. It's a little weird, to be honest with you, but my name's Matthew Lewis. I reside at 433 Frederigale Road. Dear Mr. Chair and commission members, I'd like to provide a brief background regarding time in my residence. I purchased my home nearly five years ago in a foreclosure HUD sale. The home was built in 1945. Because of the health and safety concerns that existed within the home, which included knob and tube, that was removed and upgraded. The galvanized plumbing was also removed and upgraded. Heat duct worked, and new furnace were added, as were new windows and shingles, and all this added around $22,000 in upgrades. I really enjoy my home because of the character and excellent location to the park, trails, and to the interstate. For these and other reasons, I don't have plans to move in the foreseeable future. Should be noted that a year ago, maybe a little longer, I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Anderson regarding my interest in purchasing the properties, and that offer is still on the table if the price is reasonable. Otherwise, please accept the following as testimony concerning the conditional use permit. Please note that my property, I wish I had kind of the aerial here, I'm not that great at that, but...
You want?
Oh, that'd be great, if you could. You got me on the tongue? Please note that my property directly abuts the proposed development on the south property line and on the west, where the primary ingress egress drive will exist, and I'll show that when we get that up a little clearer. Of all the properties in the area, mine will be the most impacted with this or any future development. As a brief background, developers were considering construction of townhome units on the subject site back in 2017. These are permitted outright, and I submit that residential development would unreasonably impact my normal enjoyment in home life due to increased traffic compared to the proposed professional offices. Therefore, I'm not opposed to the development. Not opposed to the development, provided the following concerns and recommended conditions are considered. As noted, there is a large building that once housed a business manufacturing dairy products. Is an older building, and I suspect because of the age, consists of asbestos. A condition should be included requiring that all federal and state regulations and standards in addition to proper permits for removal of asbestos shall be strictly adhered to. Secondly, under current code, a total of 30 off-street parking spaces are required per building. As noted, the plans show a total of 95 spaces. My biggest concern with the layout are the spaces that are directly, and this is in your, I just refer you to your packets, where there's the parking that directly abuts the rear of this, of my property. I think that those can be eliminated, whether it's for me or somebody in the future, those spaces are really not needed, and that will eliminate any kind of impact with headlights and that type of thing, especially in the winter months. So I would recommend that the commission consider that. And also that a, number three, that a wood fence seven feet in height be installed along the property line in addition to the 10-foot landscape setback. Fourthly, the exterior of the proposed office buildings, I would suggest that the commission consider, or may wish to consider, that it be, consists of earth tone colors, and non- glare windows should be, also be installed. This will reduce impacts to surrounding properties, including the adjacent Upper Ross Park. I'd just like to note that the disc golf course hole number six abuts the subject property, and I play this course quite often, and I can tell you that unfortunately, I've chucked a number of discs into this neighboring property. And so this, the property basically goes from north to south, and grade increases from north to south. And as you get to the kind of where the normal disc golf hole would be, it's about a three-to-one pitch. And so there is a concern in terms of, when you, when you look at, and this is in regards to the second building, that just looking at that elevation with the two-story building, there could be some impact there. So what I, what I would recommend to eliminate some of the concerns of disc, you know, hitting the building and so forth, is that, that the applicant consider planting additional trees along the east side of the structures to protect them from disc. And I think, because my time's out, those are my primary concerns. And so I said, I think really the biggest one is just eliminating those parking spaces that would directly face to the rear of the property, that a fence be provided there, and that's some landscaping there as well. As far as the, again, the usage concerned, in terms of impact and traffic, it's going to be less to have a professional office building there than it would be to have apartments. So that's my testimony. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
All right. Any others that would like to give testimony in favor of the application?
Good evening, commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. My address is 2580 Awahi Street here in Pocatello. I own with a partner a property located right here. It's currently a rental property. We have plans at some point to develop it. We're in the general area, and I think improvements to the general area will certainly be a positive on most aspects of the, of this area. I hope that you will consider, you know, some of the residents that live there, and actually will have to live with the project that's put in place, but I'm certainly in favor of all the redevelopment that happens in that area.
Very good. Thank you. Others that want to testify in favor? Then we will move to those who are neutral on the application, if any.
So my name is Rhonda Buchanan, and we live at 413 Frederigale. We're right next to the, the south side of the property. So the two residences that they plan on keeping are actually between my property and the parking lot. I actually not against having this go in. I just am worried about our privacy and the enjoyment of our yard. Our house has a bunch of windows, and we're up higher. Our house was built on top of a, it used to be an underground basement house, and then a second story was put on it in the 80s, so it's a little bit higher. Our deck, when you sit on our deck, looks directly to where the building is going to be. I sent you guys a letter that kind of just showed that. So the whole parking lot is basically going to be right in my house. So all of the cars that are parked there, every, I mean, the sun is going to basically shine off of every single one of those cars and be hitting my house and my deck. I am concerned about the lighting. I think I read that it was supposed to, that the business was not, was supposed to be, with regular business hours, would be closed by five or six or something every night, Monday through Friday. So my big concern, I guess, is if we can make sure that the lights in the parking lot are off, because we do have a big backyard that we like, have a fire pit in, and we like to sit back there in the dark, look at the stars, and if I have parking lot lights, which will show into our backyard, that will totally destroy what we use our backyard for, and our deck. So my suggestion would be to plant trees that are going to block that out, especially since we use it in the summer, so like hybrid poplars that are going to grow larger and pretty fast, on their side of the property, along the property line, three or four of them, however many it takes, to block out all those cars and the lighting. I am for the, I love the idea of the landscaping and all that kind of stuff. I would much rather have an office building than apartments, for sure. Then I guess the other part of the privacy is the fencing. I guess there are several types of fencing that can be considered opaque. I am concerned that if chain-link, chain-link fence with slats in it is considered, I really don't want that. That's not private, and it certainly won't block anything. So either wood or vinyl or whatever, and six foot or higher would be great. The other concern I had, and I'm not sure if it was talked about, because I couldn't really hear, but was the sewage. We are on, it's an old house, and we're on all these different sewer lines. We're not directly to the city, and we're in a lower, we're at the lower part of it, and we've had to get it cleaned out before, because everything comes to us. I just want to make sure that this part is not going to be connected to us in any I just want to make sure that this part is not going to be connected to us in any way because I don't want to have to clean up anything coming from them. Basically, my other, my other concern was, oh, the sign, whatever, I don't know what kind of sign they were planning on using. I'm hoping that they'll take into consideration, but lit signs aren't going to make our neighborhood a neighborhood. It's going to start looking super commercial if we have big lit signs in our neighborhood. The only other thing was property value. I know nobody can know what property value is going to do, but just to put it out there, if the property value goes up, that's going to make my taxes go up, which is not going to be good for us. And if it goes down, we are pretty even right now. We don't have a lot of equity in our house, and that's going to mess us up for moving someday. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Any others that would like to speak neutral on the application? Then if there are any that are opposed to the application that would like to give testimony? Okay, seeing none, we would like to give some time back to the applicant for a rebuttal, if you would.
Yeah, thank you. I think just to clarify some of the concerns, we will have to follow all of the provisions based out on the zoning ordinances. With this, they are requesting a 15-foot landscape buffer around the, basically the perimeter of the property, along with the opaque fence. And if I, and I'll have to verify the exact codes, and I understand that would be a condition of the condition of use permit to meet all these requirements and coordinate with the city. We'll verify that. And then there's also, we'll have to follow the lighting codes for the parking lot lighting, and essentially, as we can't have any of our lights flooding onto the neighboring, adjoining properties. The goal, though, is this property will be occupied during the daytime from a standard business, eight to five hours. So we're not anticipating a lot of lighting on the property in the nighttime hours, and that way the neighbors can maintain their, their residential feel. With the opaque fencing, we'll have to follow the city guidelines on that, the requirements. And if I remember correctly, the chain-link fence probably, or does not meet that requirement, so it'll have to be something more substantial along those, whether it's a vinyl or a cedar or, or wood fence. We'll address that in the final permit process of the project. Now, looking at the sewer aspect of it, we had some conversations, and we'll have to work with the city public works department on that. But right now, the idea would be to do a new sewage line out, out to the north, to Frederigil, to pick up that, and so we don't have to affect the existing lines that are in place. That, of course, is going to take some analysis based on the depth of the sewer at Frederigil and the most cost-effective approach to do that properly. I think that addresses that. Thank you.
Okay, there might be some questions here. If you'll hold on for one second. Any questions? For the applicant? Okay, very good. Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Carl, if he could come back. Carl, can you tell us a little bit about the lighting code and if we have some concerns with how a parking lot might be lit, and if we are to approve this in this way, and the effects that it could have on neighbors?
Sure. So, so I'll just begin with the condition number four in the staff report file. Their lighting shall meet the requirements, I mean, as we go, 1705-420. So what that takes us to here is, if you stand, is all lights shall be shielded in such a way as to direct light towards the earth's surface and away from reflective surfaces. So what that means is that we're not getting uplighting, and light should not be also moving out towards a 90-degree angle. All lights shall be shielded in such a way as to direct light away from adjacent properties, especially those developed with residential uses. In this case, with the nearby residential uses, that means that all the lighting would need to be directed away from those uses. Any canopy structures used in a, at a business location shall be recessed. Lights with diffusers not, that do not extend below their surface of canopy. Lighting in residential, residential, professional, and mixed-use zones shall not exceed 15 feet in height. This is residential identity, so that will be the cap for the lighting holes in this area. And it goes on. So basically, what that's doing is capping, setting a limit, and directing the light at the site to the area that is intended to be lit. That's kind of what the code's doing there. In addition to the landscape standards, landscaping standards combined with that, and potentially some of the conditions that were suggested, that would probably mitigate some of the reflective layer there. Again, what's, I foresee here, not reflecting on, not aimed toward reflective surfaces.
Very good, thank you. Now, question, what is the city's feeling about requiring a taller fence as opposed to in item six? It talks about a four-foot fence. Is the city comfortable that a four-foot fence should create the reasonable, I guess, side obscuring?
Adequate coverage.
Yes, adequate coverage, or?
So that's a good clarification point. So the landscape buffer does not necessarily include a fence.
Okay.
That condition in the staff report is referencing our parking, our off-street parking standards. So for areas where there is a parking lot, there's a requirement for a four-foot fence. The purpose of that fence is to mitigate headlights. So that would actually be in combination with the areas that would have the landscaping buffer there. I should note here that for a conditional use permit, 1702-130, the authority of the commission to grant, there's items one through eight there here on page two of the staff report. Number one is, the hearing body may impose any conditions necessary to accomplish the following. Minimize potential adverse impacts on other developments and surrounding land uses. Control the sequence of time of development. Control the duration or protection period. Assure the development is maintained properly, et cetera. So there is some guidance on which if a taller fence, if the commission plans a taller fence, would be suitable for the site, then that may be a condition that might be added to mitigate some of that concern.
Very good, thank you. That, that helps. And then last question, what can you tell us about the sign permit that they might apply for? Would a lit sign be something that they could potentially apply for, and how does that process work?
So the sign permit would be processed through a separate application. Off the top of my head, I do not remember a lit sign in this area, and I can look and follow up on that. I do, I believe a billboard would be permitted in this area, but as far as lighting is concerned, I will double-check just on, a type of backlighting, if any, would be permitted. But again, that would be through a separate permitting process.
Okay, very good. And then, the last question I have, and whether you know the answer to this or not, we'll see. As far as asbestos and concerns with that, do we know what, if we do a demolition on a building, does the building department oversee that with concerns over asbestos and other hazardous things?
I'm not familiar with the process that they would follow with a building permit. Merrill Pell is here, and he'd be happy to.
Very good, we'll ask Merrill. Thank you.
I can answer on a high level is that, yes, the building department does oversee that and the demolition through the permitting process. Through that demolition process, too, one of the requirements is, is an asbestos evaluation. So that would have to be done, taken care of, and then disposed of according to the EPA regulations.
Excellent. One more question for you, Merrill. There was a question brought up about the sewer, and there's a private system as well as a public system that would be accessible. Are there concerns from the city if they are to directly connect into that public system then, or?
If they're able to hook into the public ser, system north, the one that runs into Frederigil, that would be the ideal. That way, it would not go through the easements that is overgrown and been built on for accessibility. Also, would eliminate the additional flows that would be going through part of that private system into the public system, and the reduction of a manhole and so forth that would be required at that, at that junction of the, of the sewer and the angle points that would be required at that time. So I think if they're able to, and what has been talked about tonight going north, that would be the preferred, preferred area.
Very good. So when they submit for, I would assume a building permit, that's when that would come forward as far as?
Yes, that would.
Excellent. Any other questions, commissioners?
Not for Merrill.
Okay, thank you, Merrill. Do you have a question for someone?
Basically, for everybody that was with the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So one of the statements that was placed in the application is that this project would improve the property's physical appearance and image. And I just wanted to know from the public if you think this project actually will improve that property's physical appearance and image.
If any would like to come forward and, and speak to that question, we would, we would open it up to that.
My name is Richard Pureborn. I'm one of the owners of Pureborn Associates Engineering. It's my partner that owns this property. He has lived in it in the past. He does not at this point. Some of his family members do still live in the houses over there. Have any of you had a chance to drive by or take a look at the property? Okay. I think that other people here have attested to the derelict condition of the old, I guess it was a dairy facility, and the kind of overgrown nature of the shrubs and things that are back there. It's mostly just wild volunteer trees. Our intent is to make this a place that enhances the, that area of town to, that would be consistent with something next to a park. Someone was concerned about the color of the structure. I think brown tones would be appropriate or earth tones. In fact, I asked Richard initially if we could do this as a green building. We probably won't do that because of the additional cost associated with getting it actually certified, but where we can, we will take that approach to the design to make sure that it is efficient and compatible with the area, the other residences that are in the area.
Very good, thank you. I don't know if that answers your question. If there are any other questions that the commissioners? Okay, very good, thank you.
Mitchell Greer, again. I don't live in the area, but I do own property in the area, and I think any, any change to this property, as been noted, will be a nice improvement to that area. We've, we've been gradually cleaning up our property and hoping, you know, someday to redevelop that. And it will be a big improvement to that area, I think, by revitalizing that, that particular property.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's not any other questions that we feel need answered, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and open up for a discussion amongst the commissioners. Thoughts, comments?
Like I said earlier, is that, that when I went and made a site visit today, I wish I would have brought a drone, because there was not really a way to look at the property from where I was at, walked around. So I really don't know what's inside. I mean, you could have a circus back there. I would never be able to see it. So I'll take your word from when you say there's overgrown trees. I think it would be great to get rid of those. I think that, listening to the thoughts of the neighbors, that I don't think there's anybody that's saying no that's here. And I think the thoughts and ideas that you had are great ideas. I would, I would probably like to see a seven-foot fence that's not chain-linked and with any little slats in it. But I don't think they do that anyways, because that's not the right way to do it. So I would like to see a commercial building that's there, that's, you know, what's been talked about instead of apartment buildings. So I think that would increase, I don't know, necessarily increase the residential value of the area, but I think it will make the area stand out more and look more appealing.
Excellent, thank you. Any thoughts or comments?
So traditionally, I am fairly against commercial projects outside of what could be an infill project. But considering, I used to room with an architect. I know what you guys can do. I know that you can make it look streamlined and quiet in comparison to some of the other things that could be possible. It sounds like the residents in the area are pretty happy with the project, and considering what staff has said could be an environmental impact of what you are applying for versus what could be in the future from a residential. I don't want to say that this is the lesser of two evils, but it kind of is. So I, I'm actually, can I say that I'm for? Okay, so I'm actually for a non-infill commercial project.
My, my thoughts are similar, that it seems like that property is in need of something. And to have something, a project like this, with the owners willing to go in, make some very nice improvements, I think overall it is going to be the best move for that area. And I think that if, if somebody was proposing apartment project or something like that, we would have a lot of opposition that we're not necessarily seeing right now. Of course, there are concerns. Anytime you try and mix these zonings, which is exactly why we have these meetings, is so that we can discuss those concerns and see if there are things that we can do to mitigate those concerns and make this as smooth of a transition between the areas as possible. I probably also am in support of, of having a taller fence that would back up to those residential areas, give them a little bit of protection from any parking lot lighting or anything that might happen, even though, yes, it's likely just used during the day. If somebody does need to access the office at night, they've got their lights shining through, I think a fence there would be a good thing. And I think the rest of my concerns are probably met with the other questions that I've asked, so. Any thoughts, Sean?
At the risk of sounding redundant, I would just add in my voice to the chorus. I agree with everything that's been stated so far. I think as long as steps are taken to mitigate any undue negative impact on the residents in the neighborhood, I think that ironically, this commercial development project seems to be better suited to preserving the essential character of the neighborhood than a residential high development. So generally, I would be more in line with Julia in that regard. I usually don't like to see too much incursion from commercial property in residential areas, but having read the staff report and heard the testimony from everybody involved, it seems to me that this will make less adverse impact overall, again, provided that appropriate steps are taken to mitigate any undue harm to the residents.
Excellent, thank you, Sean. Well, with that, we'd certainly entertain a motion, and in consideration with the restrictions that staff has, has suggested, any other things that might be suggested?
I will make a motion to approve the application from Jeffrey Andrews for a conditional permit at property located at 421-443 Frederigil Road, utilized as an office, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 1702-130 of Pocatello Municipal Code, provided that the following, that the conditions contained in the staff report are met.
I will second.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? The only discussion that I would bring up is whether we want to include any type of restriction on fence height and insert that into our recommendation.
Seven-foot fence, not chain-linked with slats in it.
I would add that to my motion.
So the motion's been amended and-
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion on that motion? With none, then, Aisling, would you call the vote?
Burnt?
Yes.
Because you amended, right?
No.
Oh, Chong.
Hard grave.
Sorry. Hard graves.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Burnt.
Yes.
Carrigan.
Yes. Motion carries. We will now move on to agenda item number five. This is a public hearing, area of city impact negotiations. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public and provide a recommendation regarding expansion of the area of city impact and negotiations with Bannock County. So if we could hear from the staff on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. Just some brief backgrounds for those that may have not been, or were on the commission at the time. Back in November of 2015, the Pocatello City Council adopted a revised area of city impact in procedural agreement with Bannock County. Basically, what it did was they agreed to hold the area of city impact back to just follow the urban service boundary, with the exception of a few areas. And there were some areas that were obviously taken out. The procedural agreement was approved. And then a year later, North Gate project came along, and it looked like it was going to add that entire area, some of it that was originally in the areas of the impact. And so a year ago, the comprehensive plan map was amended to include the area that is depicted. I think it's probably the last page in your packet there. And so that was amended and designated as mixed use. The request that's before you tonight is the, the planning staff has been authorized by the city council to work with Bannock County officials to expand the area of city impact to include all of the area that's designated mixed use as depicted on the attached comprehensive plan map. And we are working with the county on this. The question that is before the commission, and it's based on Idaho Code 67, 6526-3E, states that the, there shall be the question that goes to the planning and zoning commission. Basically, the question is before you, should the area of city impact be expanded north and east of Chubbick Road and the Satterfield neighborhood to include all of the area designated mixed use as depicted in the comprehensive plan map, which is, again, attached? So that is before you tonight. It has been notified in the journal, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Matt. Have you received any comments from-
I have not. I had one individual, Angelo Trez, that was in my office yesterday, the day before. I just wanted to make sure that his property, because he has some property kind of south of that. And I just indicated that, no, it's not included, so he's fine with that. That's the only conversations, correspondence that I've had with anybody.
Okay. Very good. Any questions from Matt? Julia?
What would be the ramifications if this wasn't approved?
If it wasn't approved, then the, under Idaho Code, it's really, it's really for, because nine times out of 10, we get annexation requests that are for the purpose of, like, the property owner of the property would ask for the annexation request. Under Idaho Code, he'd fall into a different category, category B or C. That's where the area of city impact would come into play. We can, nine times out of 10, we annex, because it's in the comprehensive plan map, we can annex the property and so forth, so.
All right. Thank you, Matt. And I'll mention I failed to open the public hearing prior to the applicant, which is also the city speaking, but with that public hearing open at this point, we will then take any testimony. And I'm not even going to define it, whether it's for, neutral, or against, but if there's any testimony that anyone would like to speak on the application. With none, any questions that we feel need to be brought up as part of the public hearing? With none, I will then close the public hearing. And commissioners, if there's discussion that we'd like to have or a motion?
Are we recommending, or?
We are making a recommendation that it either does or it doesn't be expanded. I guess I have a few thoughts that I can throw out there. I mean, it seems like it is the North Gate project that really does spur this, and potential of growth in that north area could, you know, certainly require that this be done at some point. Having it done now does kind of open up and create the ability to go into those areas a little easier, I guess, so that it is done now rather than in the future. It can save some time. If, you know, the other concern, I guess, being if we're opening up this area of city impact and not able to fully service it as a city, you know, we just want to make sure that we can service it. My understanding is, is that, yes, there are abilities that as it developed out, that it could be serviced, but I don't know that there's a ton of harm in actually extending the area of city impact in this instance. Any other thoughts?
Looks pretty cut and dry. I will motion to recommend approval to expand the area of city impact boundary to include the north and, excuse me, to include the area north and east of Chubbick Road designated mixed use.
And the Satterfield neighborhood?
And the Satterfield neighborhood.
And to match the comprehensive plan map?
Exactly.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. So it's been moved and seconded. Aisling, would you call the vote?
Sanders?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Chong?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes. Motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening. Thank you for coming.